Good evening, councillors. The first item of business is the appointment of chairman. Would you confirm councillor Mrs Coburn as chairman?
I'll say chairman.
Can you confirm Peter Ishwood as chairman of the committee? Is that agreed? Okay, he's not here tonight, he's sent his apologies. So if I can move on to item two, the confirmation of...
Oh, yes, your court.
Yes, your court, yes. It's a quarter of the membership, it's fine. So the second item of business is confirmation of the vice-chairman, councillor Mrs Coburn. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, councillors, members and members of the public. Before we commence the meeting, can I do the usual reminder of the fire regulations, which are on the screen behind me. If there is a fire alarm, just go to the nearest entrance that's marked and we meet over at Waitrose. The usual mobile phones, please, can you make sure they're either switched off or it's silent? And can you just make sure that your microphone is fully working, you've pushed the card in far enough so that everyone can hear what you're saying? Usual reminder to members of the public, this is a meeting in public, not a public meeting, so please, could we ask that you don't join in unless you have an allotted slot to speak. So on to the main items, item three, the minutes, they've been, the minutes of the meeting which took place on the 13th of April 26 have been late, I'm sorry, 2016, have been laid on the table. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record? And apologies, Emma, I'll sign these at some point.
We have apologies from councillors Paddy Blagdon, John Fraser, Pat Frost, Peter Ishwood and Julia Potts, thank you.
Thanks very much. And have members declared any interest before the meeting, other than the town council interest?
Number saved, thank you.
Members have any interests they wish to declare on any of these matters? In that case, any questions from the members of the public, Emma?
Number saved.
Sorry, updates on government guidance or legislation? Peter, are you going to do this?
Yes, thank you, chairman. I have two matters to update members on tonight. The first one is in relation to the Planning and Housing Bill, which received royal assent on the 13th of May and now comprises the Planning and Housing Bill Act. The Act includes a number of significant changes, however, I'll just highlight the key planning matters and will circulate a copy of the Act following this meeting for your consideration. So the key changes are: the inclusion of starter homes as a form of affordable housing; it is understood that with new development coming forward, they will be required to provide 20% of these as starter homes, and once relevant, legislation is published to support these changes. The next point is that planning authorities will be required to meet demand for custom build and self-build homes by granting permission for suitable sites. Also creates a duty for local authorities to hold a register of various types of land, with the intention of creating a register of brownfield land to facilitate unlocking land to build new homes, and giving housing sites identified in the brownfield register local and neighbourhood plans, planning permission in principle, and providing an opportunity for applicants to obtain permission in principle for small-scale housing sites. You'll be aware that Waverley is part of a pilot scheme for this, for the brownfield register at this stage. In terms of neighbourhood planning, the Act seeks to simplify and speed up the neighbourhood planning process to support communities that seek to meet local housing and other development needs through the neighbourhood planning process. It will also give the secretary of state further powers to intervene if local plans are not effectively delivered. Extends the planning performance regime to apply to smaller applications and putting the, and it requires officers to put the economic benefits of proposals for development before local planning authority committees. The last significant point is that the government will also carry out a time-limited pilot on competition in processing planning applications, which will be fully evaluated prior to full implementation. The practical implementation of the Act will now be taken forward, we will therefore await further announcements regarding implementation and will of course provide a further update on this once it's received. The second point that we wanted to pick up on is the reinstatement of some guidance in National Planning Practice Guidance with relation to securing affordable house, housing and tariff-style infrastructure contributions, and this relates to the thresholds and where we can seek these. So there are specific circumstances where contributions for affordable housing and tariff-style planning obligations, so section 106 planning obligations, should not be sought from small-scale and self-build development. This follows the order of the Court of Appeal dated 13th of May this year, which gave legal effect to a policy set out in a ministerial statement in November in 2014 and should be taken account. So effectively what this does is bring in a threshold of, that we can't secure the affordable housing or tariff-style obligations for schemes of less than 10 unit, or 10 units or less. We do have some flexibility though, in terms of units of five to 10, schemes for five to 10 units within areas such as the A and B, but we would need a specific policy to support that approach. We can of course still use section 106 process or mechanism to secure matters required to make an otherwise unacceptable scheme acceptable in planning terms, so we still can use it, but it restricts on the type that we can use it. So hopefully that's useful for members and I'm happy to take any specific questions. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Peter. And as you say, it's rather a lot to take in, so if we could have a brief bullet point of that, those matters, but if anyone has a question, they'd like to raise now councillor's story.
Just a quickie. Virtually the first thing you said was starter homes. I wasn't sure, was that 20% of the total number of homes or 20% of the affordable housing?
Thank you, chairman, thank you councillor's story. So it'd be 20% of the overall scheme coming forward, and in terms of what a starter home is, it will be reduction of 20% of the open market value as a minimum in terms of what it would affordability, and the maximum in our area would be a maximum cost of £250,000 for a starter home to come forward. So hopefully that's helpful, councillor's story. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Are there any other questions on that, or can you wait for the bullet points? I think there's such a lot to take in at the moment, isn't there, that it's hard sometimes to grasp it all. Moving on then to item eight, which is the update on the Thames Basin Heath Special Protection Area. Peter, is there anything you want to add to the report?
Thank you, chairman, just going to leave that one to me. There's nothing to add to the report, chairman, it's for a usual update to reassure members that there's sufficient capacity remaining to support any new development at this current time. Thank you, chairman.
Any questions on that, councillor Williamson?
Thanks very much, chairman. In the absence of councillor Fraser, who normally asks a question on saying, I just felt I couldn't sort of let the opportunity go by. Could the, could the officers therefore please confirm that tonight we will be acting lawfully, utilising this strategy whilst we still haven't got the convincing evidence from Natural England which is demanded under the law? Thank you.
Thank you, chairman. I think the simple answer to that is that our view to you as a committee is that this is a lawful policy and you can rely on its legality in the implementation of it through granting planning permission. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Any other questions on item eight, or can we move on to item nine, which is the planning enforcement? Now this is on a separate sheet this time, this is partly because we got out of sync with meetings. Southern went ahead last month, but Western was cancelled, so this came sort of slightly separately this time, but I hope you've all got a copy of it. And Beth, are you going to speak to this? Thank you.
Thank you, chairman. So the purpose of this report is to provide members with a report on the progress of the enforcement team for the final quarter of the financial year. If I take you to, I think three pages in, the Western area site-specific updates start. Just a quick update on 11 Knights Road, which is at the top of, the second of the Western pages. I can just confirm that the site's now been visited and we've confirmed that the permission has been implemented, and the building's been externally altered with the kitchen facilities having been removed. So on that basis, we've now closed the file and it'll, this case will be removed from the list next time round. If I then take you to section two of the report, which is the enforcement statistics, you'll note that the good work to reduce caseload has been continuing. It's reported at the end of the quarter to have reached 173 cases on hand, at the close of business today, that was 150. With that, with the closing of older cases, there's inevitably going to be a knock-on effect in terms of the meeting of our performance indicator, which is shown on the following page at 67%, but members will note that the overall performance for the financial year was comfortably above the local performance indicator at 82%. So this report is for noting, and I'm happy to answer any further questions. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Beth. Are there any questions for Beth on this councillor's story?
Thank you, madam chair. Referring back to the enforcement activities, Two Water Lane and the sewage treatment works, both of which are actually the same breach, and within my ward, I find it, I know that there is a long period of due process in this, but they were supposed to be clear by January and it's now June, and we're still only in the process of referring to legal in order to think about prosecution. I mean, this is blatant, that the guy never even really considered clearing the space. He moved a few vehicles for a short period of time and then went straight back into full-scale business, including parking on Water Lane on the main road, cars for sale. And I'm just wondering why it's taking so long.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you councillor's story. Obviously the two sites, one's opposite the other. I think officers have been regularly visiting the sites and we have seen a marked reduction in the cars parked on the land opposite to Water Lane. Notwithstanding that, we still intend to prosecute and in actual fact, the papers have been prepared, they are with our legal team, and we're just waiting for all of that to go through at the moment, but we do intend to continue with the prosecution. Thank you, chairman.
Councillor's story, you wish to come back?
Yes, madam chair. So I just wondered, are we actually suing Thames Water? Because effectively they're being trespassing on.
No, but there is, there is some information surrounding that, that's probably best not to discuss in this forum, but I can ask the case officer to speak to you on that offline, if that would help. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Beth. Any other questions on the enforcement report? Okay, in which case, Beth, if you want to slip away discreetly, you're very welcome to do so. So moving on then to item 10, the applications for planning permission. If there are any site inspections necessary as a result of the consideration of any applications of this meeting, they'll be on Tuesday the 5th of July 2016 at a time to be agreed. So the first planning application, subject to public speaking, item A1, application under section 73 to vary conditions 1 and 24 of the permission WA 20151454, plan numbers and closure of access onto Avaley Lane. And this is to allow access onto Avaley Lane, land to the rear of Heron Court 39 Ford Lane. Rachel, would you like to introduce this, please?
Thank you, chairman. The application site, you'll see the location plan on screen and the application site outlined in red. You'll note that it's located on the northern side of Ford Lane in Farnham, bordered to the east by Avaley Lane and to the west by Woodlands Drive. The site is currently part of the garden land which serves existing two-storey dwelling, which is in the area outlined in blue on your screen, that's Heron Court. The site levels rise gently towards the rear of the site, and there is an existing vehicular access onto Ford Lane. There is a further brick-built garage which sits along the eastern boundary of Lee Garden and forecourt to Heron Court, with its back wall forming part of that boundary. Here you'll see an aerial view of the application site, and you'll note the existing building illustrated, and here you'll note the existing access of Ford Lane. This is the approved layout plan for the original application, which the applicant is seeking to vary through this current proposal. You'll see there's an existing access, or that, under that application, there's an existing access from Ford Lane to be retained. Permission was granted under that application for the erection of a detached dwelling and double garage, including alterations to the, or without alterations, and using the existing access from Ford Lane. The application, and you'll see on here the dwelling that was permitted, and a garage. The application established a principle of construction of a new house on the plot, and key to the application tonight is there are no proposed changes to the house and the garage itself. Moving on to the proposed layout plan for consideration tonight, the difference between the current proposal and the originally approved application are that the recently formed access of Avaley Lane, you'll see it's labelled proposed on the screen, would be retained to serve the proposed dwelling. At the time that the original application was granted, a subsequent application was refused under 1456 for the erection of a detached dwelling and double garage of the same form but with an access of Avaley Lane. The proposal you'll see before you now utilises the same access as was refused under that application. In reaching those decisions, it was found that the formation of an access onto Avaley Lane would have had a harmful impact on the visual and Sylvan character of the lane. However, since those two decisions were made, a certificate of lawful development has been granted under section 191, fuller formation and retention of a new vehicular access and hard standing of Avaley Lane, and that is to serve the existing dwelling, Heron Court. That certificate is a highly material change that now needs to be taken into consideration in the current proposal. It is important to note that in the event that permission were to be refused, the access could still be maintained to serve the existing dwelling, Heron Court. Were this to be the case, there'd be no benefits by way of conditions to control landscaping and a detail of the proposed access. You will see from the recommended list of conditions that should permission be granted, it is recommended that a landscaping scheme be required through condition, and the purpose of that would be to secure appropriate landscaping, which would serve to soften the visual impact of the proposed access. I'll now take you through a few site photos. Firstly, looking towards the rear garden of Heron Court. This is a site photo looking south towards Ford Lane, this is taken just within the access that's been formed. This is taken from the junction with Ford Lane, looking north up Avaley Lane. And the application site is on the left-hand side. A further photo, again looking north up Avaley Lane, and you can see the access better just on the left. And this is just taken a bit further up the lane so you can see further along Avaley Lane from the new access point. Moving to the determining issues, the matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, highways, access and car parking, and biodiversity. In respect of matters of judgment, they are the impact on visual amenity, the impact on the listed building, and the impact on trees. In respect of the impact on the listed building, the increased traffic movement and noise resulting from the new dwelling, together with the use of a shared access as previously granted, would draw attention beyond Heron Court, and the existence of a house would be apparent of a new house. This could cause a confused and understanding of the primacy of Heron Court. However, the current proposal would overcome this identified harm through the provision of a separate access for the proposed dwelling. In respect of highway safety, the Avaley Lane access has been found to be acceptable on highway safety grounds, and no objection is raised by Lee County Highway Authority. If I could now turn members' attention to the update sheet. You'll note there have been some additional letters of representation received raising objection. The matters raised are considered and responded to within the agenda report. The recommendation remains as set out in the report, and that is, that's subject to conditions 1 to 24 on pages 29 to 37 of the agenda, and informatives 1 to 5 on pages 37 to 38 of the agenda, that permission be granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. As I said earlier, this is subject to public speaking, so could I ask first of all the objector, Mr Eric Coombs, to come forward and speak? For letting you out of your pen this evening to... I think you've spoken before, but the process is very simple. When you press the button, you'll get a red light, oh, you're choosing that one, right? I hope that works. And you've got four minutes of when you start speaking.
Madam Vice-Chairman, councillors, it's a matter of record that the applicant gave an unambiguous undertaking to close up the Avaley Lane access if the currently approved scheme 1454 were permitted. Since that permission was given more than seven months ago, the huge gaping hole in the side of the road should by now have been closed. But far from honouring that promise, the applicant now seeks to do the exact opposite, and this committee is asked to accept that its decision of the 28th of October to refuse permission to 1456, an identical scheme but for its allowing Avaley Lane access, should simply be overturned, overturned by misuse of the provision for minor amendments to a permitted scheme. To claim this as minor is absurd, since it would introduce into the scheme the very feature that was a major concern of the planning committee and the explicit reason for refusing 1456. This application therefore amounts to a trick whereby a properly determined decision of this committee, in a matter of some importance, would simply have been overturned in defiance of the committee, had it not been put before you by the intervention of a responsible councillor. This is an outrageous abuse of the planning system. This application is supported by no reasons, or alleged reasons whatsoever, that were not presented and fully considered at the October meeting. These include the baffling claim that a mere rise of way could affect the appearance of Heron Court. There has been no change related to any of the substantive considerations that could warrant the committee's revising the judgements made then, when the scheme proposing Avaley Lane access to the new house was judged unacceptable in its own right because of its impact on the character of the area. It follows therefore that the revision before you would be more harmful than the currently approved scheme. Quite mysteriously, the issuing of a certificate of lawfulness for the construction of the Avaley Lane access is prominent in the officer's report as an allegedly material change in circumstances. This makes no sense. First, an access is necessarily an access to something, and if this access is lawful, it is lawful only as serving Heron Court, not for a new house. Secondly, the officer's report states that the access was formed since the refusal of 1456 and the dismissal of the appeal against refusal of the earlier nought-one-hundred scheme. This is untrue. The access was formed before both of those decisions, and members of this committee viewed it before reaching their decision on the 28th of October. Members may very well question the plausibility of assertions that the access was formed in the particular place chosen for the benefit of Heron Court as such, rather than to create a fait accompli by preemptively providing access to a new house. But if the new access is correctly certified as lawful now, then it was always lawful. Contrary to what is claimed in some of the documents before you therefore, there has been no material change in circumstances since the decision was made by this committee to refuse Avaley Lane access. To allow this trick to succeed would make a mockery of the planning procedures and a mockery of this committee. It would also set a damaging precedent of such manoeuvres prevailing. We respectfully submit that this alone is more than sufficient reason to reject this application.
Thank you, Mr Coombs. Can I invite the supporter, Mr Andrew Setchfield, to speak to the committee? Thank you. Again, I think you know the procedure, just press the button and you get four minutes from when you start speaking. The big, no, the big sort of long button, just...
Okay, good evening. I actually thought I had three minutes, so I've got about a minute to waffle. So just going from Dr Coombs's message there, firstly, the couple of the maps up there aren't correct, they don't show the access in the correct position, the Ford Lane access is not shown in the right position, the actual access is only about eight feet wide, whereas on there it's shown as a bellmouth, opposite Ford Lane, that's not how it is at all, it's an eight-foot-wide access, it's on the apex of the bend, opposite the apex of the bend, sorry, and it's dangerous. Okay, and that's the point of my whole objection here. Firstly, I just want to confirm that I own Heron Court, not Setchfield Homes, and when completed, myself, my wife and my three young children, youngest of which is four, will be moving into the house as our new family home. So I just wanted to confirm that. From the start of this application, I've done everything that's been asked of me, consulting with the planning officers, the heritage officer and Surrey Highways, and amending each scheme to their requirements, all leading to their recommendations for approval for every application that's come to this committee. Despite this, you disregarded the recommendations of your officers, Surrey Highways and the heritage officer on three separate occasions, all of whom advised that Avaley Lane access is both a safer and more suitable access. During the course of this, I've had to endure vitriolic abuse from neighbours who have consistently questioned my integrity and intentions, calling me a greedy, land-grabbing developer who obviously has no interest in the preservation of the old house. But I would have thought that now we're halfway through, the restoration process at a cost of about £600,000 of my money, my intentions are now pretty obvious, what I want to do with the old house. From the outset, everybody's apparent concern here has always been for the preservation of the setting of the listed building. Despite this, you all now want to argue that a more suitable approach to the new house is to carve a driveway straight across the front of it, completely destroying its visual integrity and totally against the advice of your heritage officer, who recommended the Avaley Lane access for approval, which is incidentally again in the wrong position. It's a matter of fact, confirmed by Surrey Highways, that the access of Avaley Lane is a safer access than Ford Lane, and I quote them, "The Highway Authority consider that the Avaley access is preferable on highway safety grounds compared to the Ford Lane access due to the greater level of visibility provided." That's in their statement. It's also a matter of fact that this access is now legal following the grant of a certificate of lawfulness, which we know. The Ford Lane access is on a corner of a completely blind bend at the junction of three roads, and is quite simply dangerous. When approached from the top of Ford Lane, vehicles need to swing over to the other side of the road on the blind bend in order to get into the driveway. So bearing this in mind, I'll revert back to my original point, that Heron Court is my personal family home, and if the access of Avaley Lane is not approved, my children will need to cross over that driveway to access the existing garage. My wife will need to do the school run every morning to and from an access with proven inadequate sightlines on a blind bend. As a result, I've taken council's opinion on this at great expense to me, where we discussed all the facts that I've outlined. And further to that advice, please be advised that should there be an accident at that acci- access after we move in as a family, causing injury to myself or my family, I will personally be seeking legal recourse against the proposed people responsible for this decision.
Thank you, Mr Searchfield. May I ask you to turn your microphone off, the same button? Thank you. Right, members, over to you. councillor Williamson.
Thanks, thanks very much, ma'am. Ma'am, chairman. I'm confused. Could the officers just very simply confirm whether the previous approval, fourteen fifty-four, or how it differed from fourteen fifty-six, which was rejected? Just, how is, what's the difference?
The only act, the only difference between the approved and the refused applications you refer to is the access. So namely, one, four, five, four, which you're seeking to vary and was approved, used the existing access of Ford Lane, whereas one, four, five, six, which was refused, used the access of Avely Lane.
It used the access of Avely Lane, which we're being asked to approve tonight as a non-material amendment. So we rejected it, but now we're being asked to accept it. I mean, that's, cutting to the quick, that's basically the question.
Yes, I would just clarify, it's a minor material amendment rather than a non-material amendment that we are considering under section seventy-three.
Yes, councillor Williamson, you should come back.
Chairman, yes, thank you. The other point is the issue that there was this understanding, and I remember it at the time, when we, when we approved that fourteen fifty-four, there was an undertaking that that access onto Avely Lane was going to be, was going to be closed. Why has that not happened?
Officers, can you answer that? Peter, have you got an answer for us?
Yes, thank you, chairman. Obviously hasn't, you know, clearly they haven't complied with it, and this application seeks to regularise, regularise that condition. So, yes, currently you could suggest they were in breach of it, but this application seeks to regularise that. Thank you, chairman.
I'm starting to get annoyed.
Yes, seeking to change the condition, perhaps that pointed to section seventy-three. You obviously want to come back.
Thank you very much, yes, I am absolutely starting to get annoyed, and even more annoyed when I start being threatened by, by the thought of, or the threat of taking, taking us to court. We've made certain decisions, those decisions are now being amended, and I just can't see on what basis they're being amended. Let me cool down a little.
Anybody else wish to comment? Councillor Hodge?
Thank you, chairman. As you probably remember, I wasn't part of the decision last time to reject this application. I can confirm that the, the location plan doesn't actually show the real position or shape of the, of the entrance, as was suggested earlier on. It's actually much nearer the entrance of Avely Lane, about one or two metres in fact, and it faces directly down Ford Lane. You can see from the photos actually. Far from being the best location for an entrance, there is a wall right on the boundary and the sightlines are very poor indeed. I know, because I've been there, I've paced it, I've looked at it very carefully. In fact, you have to edge your car out into traffic on a complicated junction before having clear visibility. The proposed new entrance is about thirty metres back from the junction, just at the point where the single-track road widens and becomes two-way. The entrance sits on the apex of a gradual bend in the road, which means vehicles emerging from the entrance have a clear view of more than a hundred metres up Avely Lane and thirty metres down towards the junction with Ford Lane and Middlebourne Lane, without having to edge out to see if anything is coming. There is no other entrance across the road to impede exit, which is, is actually unusual for Avely Lane, because the rest of the road is full of entrances to various houses. In my view, a new entrance at this location will have no impact on the visual media of others, or get in the way of anyone, or cause issues with traffic. It is in fact a far safer location to have an entrance to the property than a shared entrance on a difficult junction. I know it's frustrating when a developer or, you know, an owner takes things into their own hands and knocks down things that shouldn't be knocked down, but what's done is done, and we have to move on. And I, and I support this application. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hodge. Any other councillors wish to speak? councillor Storey?
Thank you. I'd like to go back to what Rachel said right at the beginning. Am I right in saying that since there is a certificate of lawfulness for this entrance way, which is an entrance way to Heron Court, as I understand it, even if we reject this application, that certificate of lawfulness still stands and effectively the entrance way will continue and, and can be used regardless? So why are we bothering?
Officers, would you like to reply to that? Are there no conditions that would say that it has to be to Heron Court?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, it is only permitted development insofar as it is used to serve Heron Court. So I suppose going forward, if you ignore the application tonight, the applicant has two choices. He can continue to use that access to serve Heron Court, or should he wish to implement the previously approved scheme, it would need to be closed up, hence the, in accordance with those conditions previously imposed and which they are now seeking to vary under this current proposal. Hope that helps.
Any other members wish to speak? councillor MacLeod?
I wonder if the officers could just remind me if there's been any appeals and any of the, there's been so many applications and to do with Heron Court, I can't really remember them all now. Has there been any appeals in relation to any of these applications, particularly ones that were refused?
Come back, Rachel.
Thank you. Yes, there have been a number of appeals on site. One current one to point out to you is that the refused application, one, four, five, six, is currently at appeal now, so we are awaiting a decision on that. So I suppose you could argue it's an alternative way of seeking to achieve this access of Avely Lane to serve the proposed dwelling. Going further back and before the two applications we've been discussing tonight, there were two previous applications for dwellings on site, both of which were refused by the committee, one for two houses, one for one house, both of which went to appeal, and they were both dismissed. Now, reference in that, in those applications was made to the Avely Lane access, and, and the comments really share what was referenced earlier, that there was recognised a visual impact on Avely Lane. However, it's worth noting that at that time, there was not the certificate of lawfulness in place for consideration. Thank you.
Yes, by Miss Councillor.
If I can back, madam chairman. So if there's an appeal process for this, shouldn't we just leave it to the appeal process to see if it's allowed to appeal? I mean, it strikes me that if a promise was made to close this access as a way of achieving the, the permission that was granted, the applicant should have done that. But if he feels that the committed decision was wrong in relation to this application, he's got the right to go to appeal. He's doing that, and I think it, personally, I think it should be left to that process. Thank you, madam chairman.
Thank you, councillor MacLeod. I think Peter wants to reply to you.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I think I'll come in and just generally appreciate that you made a decision on an application at the time back last year, and you took account of current circumstances. What the inspector will look at and what we're required to look at is the current circumstances and what the position is. So we have a certificate of lawfulness which demonstrates a residential access could be provided into the site to serve the existing property, appreciate that, but in principle, an access could be provided there, which we've already picked up on. So we, we need to take account of that has a visual impact, and we need to make a decision based on current position and current situation. It's, it's for members, it's their, for their consideration in terms of the visual impact, and that's, that's a matter of judgment for you to make. But we do have to make a decision on the planning application, that's our, our role as a planning authority. I appreciate that there's a peer alongside, but we need to take a view on a current planning application, and we can't, that would be unreasonable for us to defer it on that basis.
Elizabeth.
And chairman, just to add to that, that even if you as a committee decide tonight not to make a decision, i.e. defer it, the likelihood is the applicant will want to appeal against non-determination, and we would still need you to resolve what you would have said had it not been, had it still been within your power. So we would urge you to make a decision on this application if you're in a position to. Thank you.
Briefly, councillor MacLeod.
If I can just clarify, I wasn't actually suggesting we should defer it, I was actually suggesting that we should refuse it and leave it to the appeal process.
Thank you. councillor Pritchard? Elizabeth, would you wish to come back on?
Only just to say, chairman, I think we do have a responsibility to alert the committee to the fact that if you do refuse it, the inspector will ask the question whether or not that decision was reasonable, having regard to the change of circumstances and particularly the materiality of that certificate of lawfulness, which is the point that Peter was making, that an inspector will stand in that road and ask himself as to what the material considerations are in relation to that access and that certificate, the, the lawfulness of it and its visual impact, what difference that makes in relation to the, the merit of the, the application or the appeal before him. Thank you, chairman.
councillor Pritchard?
Thank you, madam chair. Peter and Elizabeth have basically summed up exactly what I was going to say. We, we have this application in front of us, committee. I, I think we've got to be sensible, and I think this report is actually quite black and white with regards to the, the positives and the negatives of this application. It is an application that we need to determine now. It's very clear, I think we're, we're sort of starting to go on to county highway sort of territory with regards to this application, and I'm no planning expert with regards to vehicular access and various things like that, but there is no objection from the County Highways Authority on this. And that is, that's black and white for me, that's quite simple. And as councillor Hodge said, the junction at the bottom of that is very dangerous, and the application, I think, would be safer with this, and it's a better layout, and I would be supporting this application.
Thank you, councillor Pritchard. councillor Hill?
Yes, I'm just going to add that, you know, I think if we were talking about several homes on this site, then maybe we might look at this differently, but for one home and potentially, you know, a handful of cars, I really don't think that this is a significant issue, and so I'm going to support it.
Thank you, councillor Hill. I wonder if I could just say something as the local member. I'm incredibly disappointed over this, very, very upset, to be perfectly honest, because I left the last meeting in October thinking we'd come to a solution, a solution that suited the residents, that suited the committee, and I thought suited the applicant, because the applicant said quite clearly, we didn't ask for it, it was stated before we asked, that this opening would be restored back to its former glory. As I say, that was part of it, and when I left here, I couldn't believe that we had actually sorted out this site, because we had had application after application. The certificate of lawfulness, I grant you, gives permission for that opening, but the opening relates to Heron Court. Now, what a mess we've got if you're going to use that to go to Heron Court, you've got the other house. I mean, it isn't going to happen in that way, is it? That's not the way people drive their cars. I mean, it just isn't going to work. We've got more problems than that in the Bourne. What the inspector said at one of the many appeals was quite simple, that this would have, they're talking about the entrance on Avely Lane, this would have a detrimental effect on the semi-rural character of the lane in this location, and that is why this committee turned it down. We asked highways at the site visit whether or not a shared access through the existing courtyard, which is wide and, it's not quite that shape, but it's wide and it's existing, I think it's tarmac if I remember, it wasn't a thing of great beauty anyway, but we stood on it, and highways said that, yes, it was a perfectly safe access to be a shared access. And when we came into committee, that was what was presented to us. We supported the shared access through to the new build, the restoration of Avely Lane, and we were promised, and it has to be said, it's a promise, I mean, there's no other word for it, that the, the lane would be reduced, restored to its former beauty, because it was beautiful, it was just a green bank of trees and shrubs. And the whole character of that part of the lane has been destroyed by what's there. You can't put it back. Now, you could say, well, you know, who cares about the character? Well, the answer is that most councillors do, and certainly most residents do. We all have a character area in which we live, and the Bourne is green. We, we like our green boundaries, we like as few gates and walls and fences as we can have. And quite frankly, I sit here incredibly disappointed that we're having this put in front of us and that the officers are recommending granting, because we took that first decision in good faith and with a promise from the developer, and I think it is really sad that we've got to come in tonight and discuss this.
Amen.
That was certainly brief to the point. Does anybody else wish to comment on this before we move to the recommendation? Officers, is there anything else you wish to add? In that case, shall we move to the recommendation? And the recommendation is, as in your agenda, that's subject to conditions one to twenty-four, right, one hundred and ten pages on pages twenty-nine to thirty-seven of the agenda, and the informative's one to five on pages thirty-seven to thirty-eight, that permission be granted. All those in favour of granting permission, please show.
One, two, three.
All those against?
One, two, three. Extentions.
Which means I have to put a casting vote, so I have to vote in the way I did before, so that's another against, yeah. Right, so, thank you, thank you, Emma. So we need an alternative recommendation. Can anyone offer one, please? councillor Williamson?
I'd like to suggest that we use exactly the same wording that we used on the previous application, which was fourteen fifty-six, the rejection that we used on that.
Can we find that briefly, and is that going to answer the question, Peter?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I think that's reproduced on page fifteen of your agenda, and the proposal, sorry, the proposal by virtue of the proposed access details and impact on the boundary appearance would cause material harm to the natural semi-rural sylvan character of the area, would have a detrimental impact on the street scene, and we would add the relevant determining policies. Thank you, chairman.
Right, that's the revised recommendation. Officers, do you have anything to add, or can we put that forward as a revised recommendation? Can I see all those in favour of the revised recommendation to refuse?
One, two, three.
And all those against refusal?
Three.
And any abstentions? My casting vote will go the same way again, thanks. Right, thank you very much, members. Moving on then to item B one.
Excuse me, I think you should note what's going on here. Do you want me to get the caretaker?
No, excuse me, can we just sit here in a civilised way and listen?
I was thinking of civilising, just grabbed on my head.
Okay, are you leaving, sir?
Yeah, I am.
Right. No, don't, they're going.
Just to let you know, the reason that the access hasn't been put back is because it tried out to anybody occupied by the house.
Thank you, Mr Searchfield. Right, and moving on to item B one, the erection of a roof extension to provide two new dwellings as amended by plans Dmail received on the twenty-first of April twenty sixteen at the Barbican East Street Farnham, item WA twenty sixteen zero three nine one. Rachel, this is you again, isn't it?
It is, thank you, chairman. So the application is for the erection of a roof extension to provide two new dwellings. Here you will see the application... Here you will see the application site outlined in red for you on screen. You'll note that it's located on the northern side of East Street, just outside of the town centre of Farnham, and immediately west of the junction of the Guilford Road and Hale Road. The existing site comprises a three-storey office building, highlighting for you here, and an existing parking area to the rear. The main entrance facing on to East Street. The site levels rise from the front to the rear of the site, and the immediate area includes a mix of both residential and commercial premises. Prior approval has been previously granted for the conversion of the existing office building to provide 11 dwellings, whilst the existing office use has ceased, that permission, all that prior approval scheme has not yet been fully implemented. The current proposal is standalone to that prior approval, and could either be implemented in isolation to provide the two flats in a roof space, or in combination to give a total of 13 flats. Here you'll see the proposed roof plan. The extension to the roof would result in a crown pitched roof form. You will see that there are new windows proposed on each of the four roof elevations. Turning now to the proposed third floor plan, this is a new floor that would be created via the roof extension. You'll note from this that the dwellings would comprise one one-bedroom flat and one two-bedroom flat. The internal floor areas would measure 72 square metres and 95 square metres respectively. The roof slope would be set in from the edge of the building and reflects the character of surrounding buildings in that respect. Turning now to the site layout plan, which I've put adjacent to an aerial view of the site, that gives you an idea that you can see better the relationship to neighbouring dwellings, which I'll talk through. The nearest dwellings to the existing building are the cottage, a long rectangular building. It's important to note there's currently no windows on this elevation directly adjacent to the development that would be affected. North of that, you'll see the dwellings on St James' Avenue. You'll note that there's only a bleak angle possible from those buildings. The proposed windows, directed to the site layout plan just here, would be positioned on the sloping part of the roof and would be set in from the edge of the building. It is worth noting that there are existing windows on all elevations serving the existing office building. Turning now to the existing and proposed street scene. Should be able to note from this that the proposal would not increase the overall ridge height of the building, however, the parapet wall would be increased. So that's where you'll notice the key difference in the roof form. An additional staircase to access the flats would be encased with a dormer on eastern side elevation, you'll see that just here. Turning now to the existing and proposed side elevation. Here again, you'll see the dormer previously referenced, and this is where you can see best the change from existing to proposed in terms of the roof form. In place of the existing roof form, which you'll see is broken up with several hip roof elements, the proposal would result in a single crown pitched roof. That change will be most visible from the east of the site. The proposal includes a dormer window on the east elevation, which we could include the staircase access to serve the proposed two flats. The dormer would be set back from the front elevation, that's this distance here, and would not be so prominent such to detract from the character of the building or indeed from the street scene. Turning now to the existing and proposed rear elevations, you'll note the key changes here are the addition of the windows in the roof space. These are some 3D visuals which give you a feel for what the building would look like. Here we have the proposed rear elevation. This is the street scene elevation, your view from East Street. Turning now to some site photographs, the brick building you see here is the existing office building, you'll see it's attached to a terrace block of houses to the left. This is a photo of the rear of the building, you'll note there works at the moment to begin to implement that prior approval scheme. Here we have a photo of the side access inside of the building, you'll note in this photo that there is an undercrossed parking area in addition to the parking area to the rear of the building. And you'll also note the existing windows that are there in the side elevation. On screen there are a few photos of the surrounding area, to just point out a few, this top left is looking towards the junction of the Hale Road and Guilford Road. Bottom left is the opposite direction, facing towards the town centre. And you'll see the retail buildings which are located directly opposite the site. I can now take you through the determining issues for this application. The matters of principle and technical opinion are: the principle of development, the housing land supply, effect on the SPA, air quality, and highway safety and parking. The matters of judgement in this case are: the compatibility of uses, namely the office and residential uses, the impact on visual amenity, the impact on residential amenity, and standard of accommodation and provision of amenity and play space. In this respect, officers have concluded that the proposal would be acceptable in visual terms, and would not result in any adverse impacts on amenities of neighbouring occupiers, or on a setting of the adjacent listed building, that's the terrace which was indicated previously. The proposal would provide a good standard of accommodation for future occupants. No amenity space would be provided, however, having regard to alternative recreation space within a town centre, this disbenefit is considered to be outweighed by the benefit of providing additional housing in this location. The proposal would meet in full the council's parking guidelines, and that's both in combination with the proposed 11 flats under the prior approval scheme, and in combination to the office space, either eventuality. If I can now turn members' attention to the update sheet. You will note that updated site location plan and layout plans have been submitted, and those were presented for you on screen. The other key change since the agenda was published is that the applicant has completed an appropriate legal agreement in respect of the Thames Basin Heath's SPA buffer zone. As a result, you'll see that reflected in the updated recommendation. There is also a further response received from the council's air quality officer, raising no objection, however, an additional informative has been added in light of that, the advice Condition one has therefore been amended to include the, to reflect those amended plans previously referenced, and there is an additional informative as well. The revised recommendation is therefore that subject to conditions 2, 3, and 4 on pages 57 to 58 of the agenda report, amended condition 1 on this update sheet, informative 1, 2, and 3 on page 58 of the agenda report, and informative 4 on this update sheet, that permission be granted. Recommendation B no longer applies and is deleted. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Over to you, members. McLeod?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've looked at this one fairly carefully, as it's in Moor Park Ward. I was initially concerned on the original idea of dormer windows on the west side, because it seemed to me that would have affected, the street scene would have affected the listed building immediately beside, but now they've been taken out, I'm happy with that. The idea of development overall in this site is a good one, two extra houses contributes towards the numbers that they have to produce in Farnham and the borough generally. My one remaining concern is the concerns expressed by the resident at St James' Avenue. And if we can go to page 50, you refer to the angle being an obtuse angle. In fact, I don't think that it is a particularly obtuse angle, actually, I think it's more of an acute angle, actually, the direction from that end velux window on the side of the building. And I would be a lot happier if that velux window was actually obscured glass, in fact, I think that would overcome the end velux window on the building. Is it actually obscured glass? Because that would take away that concern of that resident.
Peter wants to come back, you turn yellow.
Thank you, Chairman. Just while Rachel checks the plan, can I just confirm, if we go back to the elevation, sorry, is it that middle one on the dormer that you're referring to? You're referring to all the roof lights?
It's the one on the right hand side.
So that's a roof light that would be set within the pitch of the roof slope, and that's why we're referring to it.
It deserves to be of our attention.
Do you come up, Peter?
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, councillor McLeod. I mean, it is a roof light, I mean, it's not a flush, a flat window, so there wouldn't be a direct view out of it. You would be able to look and crane your neck, but there wouldn't be just a general direct view, so there should be some outlook from those flats, we think that's reasonable, given that if it was a dormer window, we may consider differently as a recommendation. So hopefully that's useful. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, I'm broadly happy with that answer. I'll just point out in the fourth paragraph, you've referred to the proposed widows, the proposed widows rather than proposed window.
Thank you, councillor McLeod. Councillor Williamson first, then councillor Hill.
Thanks very much, Chairman. I think the biggest issue I've got with this, and it's got absolutely nothing to do with this planning, it's the original design of the building, it's such an ugly building, and it abuts a very nice sort of terrace of houses, it should never have been allowed. The alterations, I don't think dramatically improve it or really have an adverse effect. I was concerned about the other looking, and I must admit, I thought those windows were dormer windows, but on the schematic, I could see that they were not, they're at an angle. I think I'm balanced, I haven't really got any issues with it. Thank you.
I know you'd rather see the Taj Mahal throughout Farnham or something, but we have to live with what's there, I'm afraid. Councillor Hill?
Yes, Chairman, this is in my ward, obviously, so I've had quite a hard look at this, I was going to be quite concerned about the parking, but in fact, there is actually quite a lot of parking, and so there isn't really an issue. It is going to be quite a bulky looking building when it's finished, but to be honest, I quite like the Barbican, I think it's, I don't know, it's got a sort of 1930s thing about it, which I should rather like, so I'm definitely got no problems with this.
Thank you. Any other councillors with new points, or shall we move to the recommendation? Councillor Hodge?
Chairman, it's hardly a new point, but I just thought that it was a fairly modest proposal, fairly sensible, and it tidies up the roof line, if anything, so I'm quite happy with it.
Good. Are you contented that we move then to the recommendation? That Rachel's already read out to you, the subject to conditions 2, 3, and 4 on pages, the original pages for your agenda, 57 to 58, and the amended condition 1 that's on the update sheet, along with the informatives 1, 2, and 3 on page 58 of the agenda, and informative 4 again on the update sheet, that permission be granted. Can I see all those in favour of granting permission?
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much, and as Rachel also said, there's no longer a recommendation So we can move on to the next item, item B2. WA 2016 0493, erection of a dwelling and associated works, this is a revision of WA 2015 1738, land at Rosemead Cottage, River Lane in Rkillsham. And Amy, you're going to introduce this to us, I hope.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Okay, so here we've got the location plan, and the site measure is not 0.3 of a hectare, and it's located on the southern side of River Lane, and it is just outside the settlement boundary of Rkillsham, which you can see here, which is to the south-east. Two detached dwellings are positioned in close proximity to the site, so up yonder is to the south-west, which you can see here, and Rosemead Cottage to the north-east. And a small number of additional dwellings and an industrial depot are located to the northern side of River Lane, so there's the depot and some dwellings here, and these are in close proximity to the site access, which is here. Dwellings and buildings forming the developed area of Rkillsham are separated from the site by a railway line and its embankment, which runs here. So the site photos just show that it's an area of open paddock land, and they are, it is currently associated with Rosemead Cottage. And then the aerial photo is useful to show the site in its fuller context. So you can see the railway line and its embankment here, and you can see that it's got a well-established band of trees that border this aspect of the site. The edge of the developed area can be seen to the southern side of the railway, so these houses here, and open fields can be seen to the northern aspect. And both the site and its immediately neighbouring dwellings are positioned to a slightly higher land level than the open countryside, so on a plateau here. Okay, so here's the block plan. The proposal is for a single detached dwelling positioned, which is centrally within the site. The existing access from River Lane currently serves both Rosemead Cottage and up yonder, which would still be used to access the proposed new dwelling. A single bay detached garage would also be provided, together with at least two additional parking spaces. They are here. A large amount of amenity space would be provided to all sides of the proposed dwelling. Let's go back then. There would be some additional hard standing for the provision of the access into the site, but the majority of existing trees and landscaping would be protected and retained, and the Surrey County Council have assessed the proposal and consider it to be acceptable in terms of highway safety. So we've got the elevations. The proposed dwelling is large, and the design does not directly relate to the architecture that immediately surrounds it. However, both the existing neighbouring dwellings are well separated from each other and the site area, and neither exhibits similar or distinctive architectural styles, and this design is considered to be in keeping with the Surrey vernacular. The floor plans, so the dwelling would be four bedrooms, and the accommodation is considered to meet the requirements of the technical housing standards by the government. There has been a previous scheme on this site before, which is currently at appeal, as it was refused, it was for three dwellings, so you can see here the two comparative block plans. It was refused due to resulting harm to the countryside and the adverse effect on the integrity of the Thames Basin Heath's special protection area. So in conclusion, the proposal site is just outside the boundary of the developed area, and within the countryside beyond the Green Belt and AGLB. However, the site is positioned directly between two existing residential properties, which are set in large plots, and it is in close proximity to the residential edge of the developed area. The proposal site forms part of a plateau of land that is positioned higher than the majority of the countryside land, which is associated with River Lane, and this position reinforces the relationship of the site with neighbouring existing dwellings. The erection of only one dwelling and the suitable retention and protection of the trees and the landscaping would soften the impact to the wider countryside setting, and the proposed dwelling would have access to local facilities and services, and would have an acceptable impact to surrounding neighbours. The access serving the proposed dwelling has been acceptable. And the matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, housing land supply, location of development, trees, highways issues, flood risk, contaminated land, minerals and waste, biodiversity, and the impact to the SPA. And the matters for judgement, members' judgement, are the impact to the AGLB and the countryside, the impact to residential amenity, and the standard of accommodation and the amenity space. And then I would just like to draw you to the update sheet, where an additional... And then I would just like to draw you to the update sheet where an additional condition is recommended with regards to landscaping. Happy to ask answer any questions? Thank you chairman.
Thank you Amy. Members, over to you. Am I going to speak about this or do we move straight to the recommendation? Councillor Hodge?
I would like to know a bit more about the risk of flooding. I noticed the town council's comments about the development would be on a flood risk area where there's a history of flooding. Do we know that when the last, when the adjacent properties last flooded?
Do we have an answer?
Or any indication of the risk?
Who's that, Louise, you want to answer that one?
Thank you chairman. Just to let you know, if I can just show you where the flood risk area is on the block plan, the flood risk area just comes slightly into the site access here. The proposed dwelling is located entirely outside of the flood risk zone, as I say, it's just a small portion of the access that falls within it. Furthermore, the Environment Agency have commented on the application and have raised no objection to the proposal in relation to flood risk. Thank you.
Thank you, I would just point out it is called River Lane and when you've driven through it and sometimes you know why. Councillor Storey?
Thank you. This is obviously an area I know well since I live not too far away from it. I think the refusal of the previous application was well justified with three houses but a single house I think fits into the landscape here without too much of a problem. It's virtually invisible anyway. You'd have to be somewhere out in the middle of what I call Lake Raccosham to get a good view of it and I can see no objection to this one.
Councillor Storey, does anybody else have any points or shall we move straight to the recommendation? Is everyone happy with that? Officers, you don't have anything else you wish to add? In that case then, shall we move straight to the recommendation? Recommendation is that subject to conditions 1 to 15 on pages 87 to 94 of your agenda, the additional conditions 16 and informatives 1 to 8 on pages 94 and 95 of the agenda, that permission be granted. Can I see all those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
That's unanimous.
Right, thank you very much, that's obviously carried unanimously and that brings us to the end of the meeting, so thank you very much indeed everybody and safe journey home.